So we had to decide between the ZBA and Sharon and myself whether it was fish or fowl. And it turns out to be both. So we said, okay, if you want to do this, it has to be a single-family home. And what we had wanted was that without a special exception from the ZBA, there would be no more than four structures on the lot, not including accessory structures which are exempt from permit and in Plymouth, those are garden sheds, 120 square feet. Limitation of the use of the property was to related family members, their offspring, and their guests. There would be no sale or rent of the use of the individual structures, and we didn't have to worry about selling the physical property itself because that would require subdivision, as would come to me, because that question was brought up to me as well. Recognition that a formal subdivision of this parcel can only be attained when Hunt Road is accepted as classified by the town, and with a reference to the limits of municipal liability, which we had talked about earlier. Restriction that the terms are transferable without change upon sale or transfer of the parcels, provided that the only changes are to the named person, persons, or entity as the owner, and recorded at the registrar at the time of transfer. And a restriction that any changes to the terms and conditions of this MOU would require review and signature to the agreement by all parties at the time of change and subsequent recording at the county registrar. So the protections that you're thinking were, the ball was dropped in this case. I wasn't looking for, or, that restriction. I knew that if you subdivided or did anything bizarre that would require development up there, that would trigger automatic visit to the planning board and automatic visits to your planning boards as well. But because I was totally focused on the single-family dwelling thing, I didn't really think outside the box, and Mike pointed that out. Now, I had spoken to Mike. He called me, and we had a bit of history when he was a state inspector, and so, you know, I always would take his call. So we spoke, and I explained to him, he's hit me with a rumor card, and I said, well, it's really not a rumor, Mike, but this is the deal. It's a single-family home, even though it doesn't look like one, but it's going to be one single family property. So we knocked it about a little bit, and he thanked me for the call. And then subsequently, I got a phone call from an unidentified, he identified himself at the time, but it was a very rude phone call from a selectman who pretty much upbraided me, kept telling me that zoning is five acres there, and it's only one acre here. And I said, yes, but this is 389 acres, and they are not proposing a subdivision. Subsequently, I received the letter and everything else. But by then, the building permits had already been issued, and I guess the question is, oh, before I go on to that, regarding the limits of municipal liability, and I always get that wrong, it's got a different name to it. I spoke with the fire chief in regards to mutual aid. And mutual aid is basically an agreement that we all help each other. But the authority having jurisdiction in Plymouth is Casino Clagston Fire Chief. So the folks that come as first responders from Bridgewater or Hebron or wherever the, you know, surrounding towns, they might be the authority on the scene until Plymouth arrives, in which case we take control, being that it's here. However, because they are acting under the authority of the Plymouth Fire Chief, he told me that this waiver that was signed extends to any first responders from surrounding communities because they're working under the Plymouth Fire Chief. I hadn't yet verified that with town council because we're running off a big bill with them lately, and it was just one of those things that I wanted to get to, but the chief is a knowledgeable guy, and that's what he assured me. It occurred to me that I believed that the homeowner up there would be more than happy to file these through your towns if what the chief said is in any way less than what you need. But that, since that is specified and the language is specified in the RSA's, either way, it would work as far as we were concerned. So, you know, it wasn't that we were being the big bully in town. It was just that because of the nature of the development, I didn't see that other thing, so I apologize to you for that. However, regarding this other one, I haven't heard anything about it yet. Nobody has approached the town of Plymouth. Knowing that you have concerns with that, plus with the right-of-way issues and everything else, you can betcha it will be on top of this. And that would be something that would either have to pass through the board, this board or the ZBA or the Board of Selectmen. But until we know what we're talking about, I mean, it's kind of third-hand for you guys as well. We really can't say. However, it won't happen without, since they're coming directly through a property in Bridgewater, I think it's kind of important. Plus, we don't even know what they're proposing at this point in time. Looking at our property maps, and, you know, it's funny, when you contract a mapping company, they act like that whatever's off the edge of the map is, you know, here there'd be tigers, so it's all a big blank spot over there. But I could show you ours here. I don't believe that there are any properties less than five acres up there. I could be wrong. It might be in the fours. But those are, you know, they are what they are. Normally, the larger tracks up there because of logging and things like that. However, so, we're very aware of your concerns. We thought we were aware of when we needed to bring you into it, but I've got to ask you, the question is, is do you allow development on Class 6 roads in your communities?
Do we?
Yes.
Not without me bringing the road up to standards.
Okay.
No.
Right, but that's.
It's originally. I don't know about Hebron's.
It's essentially the same.
For even a single-family home? You do not accept?
No.
Subdivision, so you have to describe between subdivision and building permit. In this case, it was a building permit, so it didn't come before the planning board.
Correct.
And that's what makes it so murky. Had it been a subdivision, clearly we would have been at the table.
That'd be a different story. As you know, the project is pretty near complete. In talking with the contractors and everybody who were involved, and I do believe that they actually spoke to the road agent in Bridgewater because they were accessing off the Class 6, and they wanted to find out if there was any problems with the road. And he assured them, and of course, this is only hearsay, that there was no problems there, at least it was delivered to me. Al told me yesterday that he has actually placed a culvert offside of his property in Hebron. I think it's in Hebron.
It's in.
It is in Hebron.
Okay.
And also put loads of gravel and things like that to maybe mend that road or bring it back up, because every time it would rain, whoever had been doing the previous work on the road had used things that were not, it's like black sand versus gravel. I guess the question is, and it's not me to ask, and the chief probably refers to the board, is how would you like to go forward?
I have a question. Would you say that Plymouth is really the responder, is the first responder, and they're responsible? And Hebron agrees harder to be first prior to Plymouth? And they have to take some sort of action? And that action later on is proven to be faulty, whatever. Both, you know, both is not fair if you can direct it or to be the one.
Right.
He makes the decision, or he can make the decision. So the liability issue there, perhaps, unless it's written and clarified.
Yeah, you know, which is why I offered it. I actually had sent Mike a hard copy of that waiver, you know, for his use. The overriding thing with what you were saying is, there's no guarantee that if my house is on fire, it's on the fire department, and they're probably watching this, wouldn't make mistakes as well here at home. I don't believe that the law is such unless it was gross negligence that I could go after the town. If it was gross negligence, I would go after the individual fire department. That's true everywhere, I do believe. But as I said, you know, I offered you that document if you would like, and I could always put it to them to see if they would be willing to follow. Did that answer your question?
Yes. And the tape should be if something was needed.
It's, you know, I could get a letter from our attorney pretty much detailing everything that we're discussing here as far as who's responsible for what and when, and I think it's necessary. So when I do get that, I will pass it on to both of your boards, okay? As well as, you know, any copy that you would like.
Well, as you know, Brian, our planning board, and I believe Hebron's, we have no, zero enforcement authority. That lies with the AHA, which in Plymouth's case is you for an fire department, but in our case, it's the Board of Selectmen. So any type of agreements or anything that had to be made, had to be made through them and probably Sharon and Plymouth Board of Selectmen, because we don't have, I mean, all, and like you said, I mean, this, generally what happens is, I'll get a phone call, somebody wants to do something, a subdivision, a boundary line adjustment, whatever, and if it's anywhere up in that area, I'll generally, if it's something that's not a big deal, we'll deal with it. If it's something that I'll call you, as I have before, if I know that it's, now this thing that just came up, this is, this is going to go, but, you see, here's my concern. They don't need to notify, I don't believe. See, there's no case history on this. I don't believe they need to notify this board. But for access to, they own, he owns, he's a landlord, or if he does a subdividing, then it becomes a building permit, which would come to you, which doesn't trigger how the access to the property.
Correct.
But if this person, this applicant, were to go to a surveyor, get the right-of-way, pay for the right-of-way, record it in the Grafton County Registry of Deeds, I don't think they have to come to us either at this point, because a right-of-way, there's, it's not a subdivision.
Right, it doesn't rise to the level of planning board.
Right. I don't think, it doesn't rise to the level of planning board. So what I'm worried about in this case is that this applicant hires a surveyor, surveyor comes out a 50-foot right-of-way, it gets recorded in the Grafton County Registry of Deeds, there's no planning board issue here because there's no subdivision, okay? It doesn't rise to our occasion because there's no subdivision, there's no boundary line adjustment. And all of a sudden, he comes, uses, Brian, I want a building permit. So what, I don't know. I'm going to defer, I, I look.
The fish or fowl thing again, you know.
I don't, that's what we're worried, because easily, it doesn't, neither one of them rises to the occasion. It certainly won't rise to the occasion of your board if there's no subdivision and it's not commercial. So you're not going to hear it. You're the only one that's going to hear anything if they choose to get a building permit. But you can be assured that I'll call you if they start building up there.
Yeah, that's a weird one.
I know. And the reason is, is they don't want to pay to fix up your Class 6 road at how many hundreds of thousands of dollars.
However, knowing what we know today, we mean this one. Because of that RSA, 43, I believe it is, with access, now I know that I need to get you in here, you meaning the board.
Right.
And I don't, would that be purely Bridgewater and Hebron is involved?
And that's the other one I'm talking about?
Yeah.
That one would be just Bridgewater. But there's some cases it may be them, and some of the other.
Yes, but as I said, I mean, I'm not just reserving this for Bridgewater. But now that I know what to look for, and that, then, because you could almost say, well, yeah, with all the undeveloped land, people are going to want to start doing this at that, you know, as soon as I get some information on it. And, you know, maybe they're, maybe they're just going to set up tents up there. You know, we don't know what it is at this point.
That's right.
And if they don't get a building permit, first we have to ask about effect, and secondly, it would be, you know, I mean, if they're going up there to camp, chances are they're going to go up and stay and then come back. But, you know, once a building permit is issued, that's when the RSA kicks in. And knowing what to look for at this time, then I will do that, or the Board of Selectmen know. You know, and this is a good thing about this meeting, because we never would have heard of this, and you're absolutely right. I mean, now that I've been notified, you know, for months ago about it, I would say, you know, have you checked with the other side? Because they're taking an access off your road, I do believe, and the RSA speaks to it, that they're going to have to come along with what you say at least to a certain point.
Well, you would think so, and I'm trying to get the applicant to come in for a preliminary to us. And then get you guys involved in it too, because this is, it's going to, it's going to be, the development's going to be in Plymouth.
Yes.
So, but at this point, the applicant feels that all he has to do at this point is hire a land surveyor. Now, I'm not sure how that works, since there's no subdivision, there's no boundary line adjustment, there's a rise to the level of planning board, can they file that at Grafton County without planning board box and 100 mile hour? I don't know. That's what we're worried about.
Yeah, rights of way are, I think they're private, and even though they're part of it, they don't have to visit to the board.
And so we need to, but just so you know, that's common. We'd really like to, like, meet with you more regularly with stuff like this crap stuff, and more with sharing the board on the five acre and one acre stuff. And somebody pointed out, like, for future economic development, all the boards, even maybe some of the owners, get together, especially with those stupid things up there on the mountain there, you know? It doesn't matter anyways.
Our board was never notified about that.
Sorry.
The planning board in Grafton did not notify Plymouth. And that is definitely a project of regional impact, whereas a single-family home wouldn't be, which is all the more, I mean, you can see, I think, why I wouldn't be aware of it. But something like that, I certainly would.
Even let me ask you this one, since you're all the way here. We have an application coming into us from Verizon. We've already proved this tower, we've approved it for seven carries, we did it some time ago. It falls within the 100-foot thing, and what they want to do is they want to replace the tower with another newer tower for the 4G, and I don't understand all the technological stuff, but, and remove the other tower. We see that as just a building permit, since it's not exceeding the height, they're not outside of the 100-foot thing, there will be redundant, and we asked them specifically about redundancy on the two towers, to make sure everything was up and running, and then they were going to cut the other tower down and fly it out. Do you guys think that that's a regional, I don't see it. I think it's a building permit only.
Not in, in the world where we can be logical and rational, but as you know, that world is being shrunk down to nothing, and it all becomes, if you pardon my vernacular, the CYA world of illogic. So, no, I wouldn't consider you to have to do it, but if we were in that situation, I might think twice about just sending you a notice, by the way.
So all the 10 towns then?
We're getting, we're getting notices from 100 miles away for cell towers that can't even be seen, and I think that's where this is going in a political slash legal climate. Because you're right, it's just, it's, it's a replacement on the same footprint.
Exactly.
And we have a similar one here in Plymouth that's before, actually, it just got to Sharon, where they're putting an extra tower on a building. I don't think anybody in town could point to the antenna. It's up on top of the Science Building at Plymouth State. It only helps, but you can't tell, and, you know, what's the difference between that, which would require notification to surrounding towns, versus an air conditioning unit up there, which is much bigger and even more visible? So, but they're funny about cell phones. You know, it's obvious that it's, you know, you were talking earlier about not keeping up with tech. Well, the state is even further behind, I think, than we are as far as how to deal with them. You know, and like Sharon said, you know, we can't see it from our house. We might notice two towers there one day, and the next day, there's only one. So where's the impact? You know, it's only during that timeframe where they're building the tower before they take it down that we would have anything to say about it, and the net result is zero. It's going to be the same. But if, you know, if we're going to stick to the RSA's, and chances are, you know, I don't know if it's a notification issue, but perhaps this meeting would take the place of a formal notification, but I don't know. I mean, we'd have to look at that and.
We looked at it that way, and our engineer from Texas, who you called me, he wanted to, to not violate it and do everything because they're so used to this thing blowing up on them. They wanted to physically take the other one down and then construct a new one, but that would leave a huge gap for our public safety, and we, we, meaning this planning board and the Board of Selectmen, said no.
Exactly.
Because that's where some of our antennas are. I mean, that one's gone. You know that won't happen overnight. So they suggested in the same footprint, no height increase, it's going to be a skinnier tower, it's not going to be a lattice work, it's going to be the new up-to-date ones. We thought, but we should notify, we'll notify you when we get any more, but they're planning on doing that, and we thought it was a building permit issue plainly. You guys are shaking your heads like you maybe agree to that, thinking that that may be? Do you think so?
I mean, common sense.
A question on, I guess, maybe it's a mutual aid question, I'm not sure, but what happens if Bridgewater is the first responder, and they're headed up with a fire truck? Fire truck tips over, two guys are killed. Who, who indemnifies, who covers that loss of life, that loss of equipment?
I would have to say it's your town insurance, not knowing anymore about it, but the way things work, I mean, you know, where does the truck crash?
It's on a Class 6.
If it was headed to the Chalmers and it crashed in Hebron.
No, I'm talking about beam on the Class 6.
Right. But, so, but the Hebron's part of it is Class 6. Right. Isn't the Hebron section of Hunt Road leading up from the west a Class 6 road?
No.
It is not?
It's a class 5.
Okay.
Past your house?
Yeah, between I and Al, so, we live at the top.
Was that the salmon-colored place?
I'm sorry?
The salmon-colored place?
Yes.
Okay. By Wade Hill Road.
Thanks for not saying "pick". Okay, and my brother, Coach Rockwell, owns a land, it's, you know, 180 acres, something like that, and we bought Chalmers for a few ways along, along the road. And Chalmers, really, the problem is the road in Hebron, the unmaintained hill, which is the worst part of the road, is about into its fourth or fifth mud season, you know, this year, and Chalmers have been raising pretty heavy trucks up there. That I expect won't be a problem, because Al Chalmers said he tends to be a good neighbor, and he's pretty well-resourced. So I'm sure he'll fix it, and they've already done some work on the road in addition to doing the culvert and some other things. But this whole thing was a surprise to Hebron. In fact, we, we didn't know about it until the bridge construction was going on. And as far as I know, Hebron has never been contacted on it.
No.
So there is a road impact, whatever the legalities are.
Correct. But in the nature of Class 6 roads, unfortunately, it falls to you and not to the municipality and to the Chalmers, anybody that lives along.
But that's a Class 6, but not the Class 5.
Correct.
Which is what I'm talking about in this case.
Okay.
It's some contraintance, but it is a Class 5. So I guess in the ground's human things, it would be helpful that the towns were rare.
Yes.
On something like the Sapphires. But that just goes to what we've been discussing.
Correct.
Is there, is there some way on a, on a go-forward basis that we could have some communications about what is happening in Plymouth? I talked earlier about some common areas where Plymouth has the one-acre zoning, and we are at five-acre zoning, and I suggested that part of our concern was that you could approve a subdivision that is not on a Class 6, or, you know, it's on a regular road, we wouldn't have to be notified. We can't ask you to change your zoning.
I don't know if we'd ask you to change your zoning either.
Correct. But is there a way that if the planning board could take note and notify the Bridgewater Planning Board, or it was Hebron, notify them that something's happening? It might not be a regional impact, but it would be nice to know.
Well, we do, we have many venues for regular public notification, electronic media, computers is usually the best. We do have a website and all the public notices that would go out for any meeting that has any application, or, you know, sometimes even a simple work session like this, we can get the agenda up and running. I think that would be the best bet. I mean, otherwise.
Well, I would, I would suggest that someone in Bridgewater would have to check your website.
Right.
I don't think we'd be, why would we?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, just for, I mean, it's not that we're not willing to do it, but I mean, then it becomes regional notification about everything. We're required, you're asking us to send you the information. It just goes outside the parameters of the protocols, that's all. Let's see, there's information, it's at the library, I mean, these are all places in Plymouth, but I mean, the website is one of the premier media for these public, these noticed public meetings, and it's the easiest, the most easiest, most easily accessed site. I mean, I understand where you're going, and I appreciate that very much, but, you know, if we have to start sending notification to you of our own volition outside regional impact, then if we mess up or something, then that creates a whole other firestorm. I just think, you know, in that protocol, it's not correct. Not that we don't want you to know.
If I may, there are no town roads that approach the border. The closest one is Hunt Road. Wade Hill, I think, goes into Plymouth. Pike Hill Road comes up.
That was kind of impassable.
Yeah, and all of those. You know, you can make it, the four-wheeler clubs love Pike Hill Road, for example. But the, just the fact that it's a subdivision would require notification. If it was anything less than a five acre, or if it was a building permit, it would require notification. Any development up there other than logging, I think, would probably, it would go to one or both of the towns.
You were talking up in the same area.
Correct.
Well, aren't there other areas, Dick Brown Road, for instance?
The property, yes, and the properties out there are large, so they're ripe for subdividing. There was one, Martin Estates, it was the old Martin Farm, took access off Bridgewater Hill Road, and they're fairly large, they're over than our minimum. I think they're three to five up there. Chances are, you, I don't know if your boards were involved in that.
Mr. Rosny probably has some recollection of that, since he was the lone member of the board that was on at that time.
Mr. Chairman, as I'm listening to the request here, and first off, my apologies for being tardy.
Yes, I saw you coming out of.
We had a non-public session that I had to stay over for. In any event, as I, as I listen to the discussion and the question here, and I'm detecting a great deal of discussion that's in generality, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be helpful if you were to be more specific in terms of a written request as to what you might be looking for. I detect that some of the things are going to be very problematic, and how far do you want to know within the town of Plymouth boundaries of when certain things happen? There's certain streets, certain areas you might be interested in? But my statement, Mr. Chairman, is that if they really are interested in. But my statement, Mr. Chairman, is that if they really are interested in finding out that we would entertain something, that it needs to be in writing and it needs to be more specific and lay out some boundaries as to what the thresholds are or what kind of conditions and on the ground where generally they might be most interested, then determine if it's something that this planning board would entertain, providing as a courtesy.
Right. Martin Estates came out, the entrance came out of Dick Brown Pond Road within a tenth of a mile of Bridgewater, I believe, maybe a little bit less. Some subdivisions may be a mile away from a town. I mean, do we, where do we make the threshold of when we contact you and when we don't?
I think the question, if we look to the RSA, the answer is there.
Yeah.
They take sole access to their property through an adjoining town.
Maybe I was misunderstanding. I don't think so, but for Mr. Reidman, but I understood his request to be that the town of Plymouth notifies Hebron, Bridgewater and whomever else about everything on the planning board agenda.
No, 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 no. Only where there's a common area.
Well, you mean, under regional impact, under that RSA?
Not necessarily.
Well, see, so that would be more generic, yeah.
So I want to make sure also, there must be houses that access Plymouth that are in Bridgewater, in Hebron, that have to go through a Plymouth Road before they get, are there?
Well, you could, but the key is sole access.
Right.
If you were at the bottom of Texas Hill Road and Bridgewater Hill Road, that's, that's in Bridgewater. A thousand feet up, you're in Plymouth. If you're coming to Plymouth from there, you just go up Texas Hill Road and you come out downtown. But there's dual access. You could access that property by going around a River Road, Bridgewater Hill Road, and then access it there.
So you're talking about like a common thread where you would contact us and we would contact you?
Yeah.
And that's the way it's been in the past or that's the way you're thinking you want to go forward? Just not sure.
Well, I see where Sharon is going with that because where do you, and Brian is right. I mean, is it a thousand feet and then something's a thousand?
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be obstructive.
No, 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 I get your point.
I don't want to start a precedent and then not follow.
No, I understand.
It's site-specific.
And I think that just the topography and I think the economy and economics are going to play a huge role in 95% of, especially in that area. Because like you said, to get a road, town road in up there is going to be probably cost prohibitive for what they're going to get out of the development, at least at this stage of the game right now in 2013.
And I would think if a large, I mean, we're pretty, it's kind of nice that it's four structures on 389 acres compared to what the previous owner might have done with it. There were rumors going around, but I would think we're pretty lucky in that respect. I think that if it was going to be 389 lots on that lot, on that development, and it was going to empty into Bridgewater and use their fire services, I would have, I would think it wouldn't be too hard to make a phone call.
Well, that, Mr. Chairman, that would actually require the regional notification. That kicks in all the, all the boards.
Because it came to the subdivision.
Right.
That's the key word, is the subdivision. Where it got messed up here is really, probably leaving being here tonight, if that was a 24 by 36 K off the grid up there, I think with all the other things that happened with the extra buildings and the dwelling unit and the big, huge commercial type of cook rate thing around, then I think lots were the problems. Now, I wasn't aware tonight that those 20 by 20 sleeping cannons had septic facilities there.
I think they're tied to them, yes. But there are, the bathing facilities are actually in the main launch.
Okay. This is just a.
It's a gross bunkhouse, basically.
Right. And I didn't know about the operate party either.
Yeah, they have a solar array up there as well. Again, it's cost prohibitive to run power all the way up there.
I think so, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Mr. Redline, if somebody wanted to comment?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to comment that as a member of the Hebron Planning Board, we're not asking for anything more than the statutory requirement. In this case, the building permit was something that none of us was really paying attention to in that sphere. So any subdivision, we are required to notify the other town with sole access. So no trouble there. That's all we're asking for and it's good to have these conversations. Can I ask a different question? This is an official planning board here.
Can you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, Roger LaRochelle, Hebron Planning Board, placed here.
This is a planning board work session. This is a public informational meeting. It's not a public hearing. But you're welcome to speak at the chairman's discretion, which we're doing, so.
Well, fair enough. So the question is, particularly for the students in the room, any gathering of planning board member constitutes a meeting and we're required to take minutes. So the question is, is so are we tagging along your minutes? Are we responsible for doing Hebron, Bridgewater and Plymouth?
Exponential.
Exponential. We, as you know, this meeting is being recorded, broadcast live and recorded digitally, so it will be up on the website, the Plymouth website, so you can see it again. And, you know, within the statutory requirement of five business days, we'll have draft minutes. Now, we can't guarantee that they're accurate, but there'll be draft minutes available. So those will be posted on the website and if you want a hard copy, just stop by or give me a call, I'd be happy to mail that.
So those are your minutes?
Yes.
I'm just raising out, are we responsible for crafting minutes in Hebron and Bridgewater? This is a general question here, losses academic.
Is this a site visit?
But it's a gathering of planning board members.
Yes.
I would say you would treat it as you are attending another planning board's meeting. You did not bring your meeting to water, you didn't share it. And I don't think you have any need for minutes at all.
It could all be a basketball game.
And if anybody asked what took place, I would certainly have a copy of our minutes in hand. I don't think you need to do anything but secure them.
Once again, if I just may say, I mean, our website, it's not overly slick, but it's effective and it works. And all the meeting schedules and the minutes and the public notices are all there under planning boards, so for informational purposes. I mean, we'll certainly try to, if, you know, if something is ringing a bell outside of the regional impact statute, because we're developing a relationship here, there could be some phone calls made. But I would say if you're curious, the notice is up actually 12 days before the actual date of the next meeting. And the schedule of all our zoning and planning and work session meetings as considered is up there. I mean, sometimes we cancel a meeting because we don't have a quorum or we don't have an agenda. We have to meet once a month, we realize that. But all that information, long story short, is on our website. So that should help settle out some of the confusion that I know we're all going to have when we try to figure out each other's meetings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to give you a suggestion. I will work with the chairs of these boards to get their concerns concerning these developments in a better form. And then I can present to you as far as what we think would be a good way to go. Obviously, if it's purely a building permit issue, policy, you know, will prevail. It would obviously come to me first. But, and I, I mean, other than agreements about things, I don't know if there's any binding power between the towns for that. I mean, if Mike said, for example, you know, any three acres are okay, you know, anything less, I'd like to be notified. You know, there's nothing that says I must, other than giving him my word that I would. And I don't know that the board could actually take a motion and vote on it as to what those parameters are because it's a little bit outside the scope of the RSAs. But as an informal thing, there's certainly, we all know the red flags that we're looking for right now. You know, and we can say, okay, in the case of the Martin Estates, because it's approved, it's, and there are still building permits to be sought up there. Not all the properties have been built on. Would you be interested in knowing about those? Or do you figure that that's, it's, do you know where I'm getting at?
I know where you're getting at, and Brian, I don't think, I think maybe just, I don't want to really get real formal here. I think we'll keep it the friendly and neighborly way, you know, and I think that's the best way is we start getting into letters and lawyers and stuff like that, that's where stuff gets messed up. I think we're just, you know, hey, Brian, you know, we got, like that thing, we had no idea about that curveball today about that. I think just the phone calls, beating here today is the kind of stuff that, and then I'll work with you, and you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, to find out the answer to that. Because quite frankly, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I don't, that came out of left field. And I don't have the answer to that. And neither do Lake Region Planning, and there's nowhere, I looked through that book and I couldn't find anything on that. So I think that's something that between just, we can work it out and figure out what we're going to do.
This is a regular dose, as you know, of the rumor mill. So, you know, we need to be in touch just to.
I think that can be just a Brian or Chair, or Mike, what's going on?
No need to set up a yearly meeting unless it's necessary.
Well, I mean, other than maybe for some other things like economic development, which we, at some point, we should maybe be talking about, but not in this forum tonight, maybe. With other boards too, about what we can do to, for some economic development, that's another thing.
Just a quick question on that. Do your two towns belong to any particular chambers of commerce?
Bridgewater belongs to the Plymouth region.
Okay.
To you? Hebron?
Mr. West?
Mr. Chairman, reflecting further on the question that was raised earlier, it occurs to me that a mechanism that I am aware of that other towns have used in the past where they have representatives attend either a planning board meeting or a select board meeting, is once you have secured a copy of the minutes from where you took your site visit, is to use those and make them a part of your next meeting. As you report on what you did, you can then make them a part of your record.
Right, I think so.
So I think that's a mechanism that would satisfy if anybody brings up the RSA about this is a meeting, here's a set of minutes of what took place in that meeting. So it becomes part of your record.
Offer them and we can put them in our meeting.
We'll do the work for you this time.
What we're looking for.
Any alliance of the debut? Have anything to say?
Yes.
I have something that, Mr. Chairman, you might find interesting in a totally unrelated manner, since I know that the town of Plymouth had a few issues with the wind farm here. The SEC turned down the April project today.
Good.
And aesthetics was the reason given. I don't want anything more.
That's, we're an intervener with that in addition to other concerns. Wow.
And you're aware that there's two more proposed for.
Alexandria and.
Danbury, right?
Danbury.
Danbury, Hebron, Groton, Orange. Williams and Orange.
Could have told them that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If any of the students have anything they'd like to say, if you're welcome to stand.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Redline, one more.
I would just like to say that, you know, maybe on a annual basis, you know, this time of year, being slow, that we might all get together, you know, and include some of the other towns and just, you know, I mean, we all have things that are possibly coming down the pipeline. We don't know whether it is or not, just, but for informational purposes, just to cooperate within, you know, within the communities. Because we're all in the same area and whether it's required or not required, out of, you know, mutual consideration. You know, if my neighbor was going to do something, you know, I would be interested also. He's not, you know, he's not liable or under any obligation to tell me. But, you know, being neighbors, I think we need to work together and, you know, mutually contact one another and if we need something, you know, give it out and cooperate.
I agree 100% and all for that. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Come on.
All right, what brings us to item number eight, unfinished other business? Nothing? Mr. Gosny?
Under unfinished.
Have a good night.
It rid everybody.
Not everybody, it's Frank. Not everybody. It's still Frank. We always have Frank. Now we have our usual, yeah, it's not, we always have.
Hi, Stan.
That's what I, as I just said, we always have, we always have.
I think they're moving their way out.
Under the Board of Selectment, since I was out of the room.
Yes, back to that.
One item that I brought up speed also, it's about a good deal of your activities last month dealing with petition warrant articles. The select board had a public hearing that they opened and closed earlier this evening and there were no petition warrant articles that needed to come in front of the select board. So I just thought you ought to be made aware of that.
So, good.
Nothing.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Any other item on unfinished other business?
You have new planning RSA books, so now that you've got your.
These are ours.
All the ones all, you know, marked and underlined and tabbed like I do.
These are ours?
For yours, that's your, that's your compensation. All of it.
I want to bring up one thing on unfinished and other business. John Kelly and I have been meeting at least once and talked on the phone a couple of times about Teddy Mountain Highway and doing some basic meeting of the minds and discussing a couple of items. And hopefully this is a good start to taking a look at Teddy Mountain Highway and going from there. So I just wanted to at least mention that here. There's a reason why we don't want to bring it along too fast and there's hopefully some good things coming down the pipe on it. So, anyway, that brings us to item number nine for public comments.
Frank Miller, public. In listening to the conversation, I'm a little irritated with the, this part about Class 5 road, which is the authority to act. First of all, within a piece of land, RSA 477 colon 23 determines the legal elements of right-of-way within properties between landowners. Once that right-of-way or way goes to a town and/or a state highway, then whoever that agency is, is the one who determines the specifications of the way that is being presented to them. In other words, this piece of property, 300-some acres, is putting in a 50-foot right-of-way by town regs that would meet the criteria for a public way of public road system. Now, you have to talk about car trips per day that determines the specifications of the profile of how the road is constructed or the way is constructed. Now, in the mid-'80s, when this issue came up, where towns were not maintaining Class 6 roads or other unclassified ways within their towns for budgetary purposes, i.e., they weren't going to plow and maintain a way for one landowner. So the state gave the towns the authority to act. And the problem is, a lot of our ways, so-called our Class 6 ways, were only labeled that, but their construction was back 100 years ago and nowhere near meets the specifications for load-bearing capacity for our police or emergency response vehicles. So as a result, and my property, I'll probably say, as a result, when it was subdivided in 1982, was what changed Plymouth zoning ordinance, that A, any property that would have. So as a result, and my property, I'll probably say, as a result, when it was subdivided in 1982, was what changed Plymouth zoning ordinance, that A, any property that would have over two houses or more required a road, a Class 5 survey, not to exceed 10% grade road with a 24-foot wide processed load-bearing way. A driveway is 25 feet and only requires a 10 or 12-foot wide with a one-foot of crush bank. And then the catch, the part that you have to pay particular attention to, and now has become more restrictive as of the first of this year, is erosion control and embankment. And that's the fact that if you disturb more than 45,000 square feet, you must have an engineer design your drainage systems to make sure that your road, your house lot, does not put the fines into the surface water and reduce that quality. So the fact is, if somebody were to be in Bridgewater, but the road access was to Plymouth, Plymouth does have a control, because once they come to town to get a permit to attach to your road outroad, they have to meet the town specs, which basically mirror the state specs, because that's who has established them based on the fact that the footprint loading, the ability of the way to take the weight of the normal traffic on that way without ruining it, so that the towns, what was happening is the towns were spending gobs of money trying to fix up roads that weren't designed correctly and did not have the surface force material they should have had, but the towns having to pick up the tab for private individuals or developers who were impounding or impacting towns' finances for trying to maintain the road structure. So actually, there's three parts to that. RSA 477 deals with the instrument's rights of ways within properties, and then the other one is the highway ordinance, or RSA's, that deal with the authority to act to establish ways and conditions as we do. You have a town engineer, if you have a subdivision, the fire chief's got to go up and see if in fact his piece of equipment that is scheduled to respond to that type of structure can actually maneuver and not fall off the wayside, tip over, because the material put in the roads or the turn-on areas were insufficient for the way of the vehicle. And then, of course, the other part is, if these pieces of property that are way out there, and there's only one or two people there, the board selects several of the towns, say, you know what, we're not going to, we're going to reduce the budget and not expend all these monies to maintain one or two homes, they'll have to maintain themselves. And that's, that's a decision separate from the specifications of road, which is separate from the label, which is supposed to indicate, hey, if you say Class 5, it's supposed to be a certain width, process way, certain water structures, drainage, and all that. But a lot of our roads are from leftover from yesteryear that don't meet that specification. So I think that was, what I was picking up as a person, is that there are three of those three separate actions that are inconclusive, and that's the part you need to actually go through the various authorities to act laws, rules, regulations, codes, and standards that allow that, and that's part of our, obviously, our process in a Planning Board, is that it goes to the fire chief, and if he determines that his apparatus cannot safely go there, then that's an obligation to the person applying.
Interesting. Thank you, Frank. All right. That brings us to item number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, second by Mr. Ridman, I was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, 7:47.